Closed session for morning.
This thing, huh?
Do you need any input?
I have Tom, I think Thomas is Tom Fay. Tom, you want to come to the mic and introduce yourself and talk about what you needed?
Tom, give us your name, address, and you have three whole minutes to-
Three whole minutes. Maybe I'll read, that'll be quicker.
Yeah, you can do that. Give us your name, address for the record.
Tom Fay. I live at 304 Lakeshore Drive, Lake Mills. I'm here with my associate Doug Bruss, who is a spokesman for our food drive. So, good evening. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak. Again, my name is Tom Fay, and next to me is Doug Bruss. We are here to explain the rationale behind sponsoring the food drive called Miles for Meals. For 2015, the event will be held at the Lakeside Lutheran High School on Saturday, September 12th, from 9:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon. This one-day food drive is an attempt to replenish some of the items available in the Lake Mills food pantry. Lakeside Lutheran's wonderful track provides the arena for the day-long walking of laps. During this time, we accept nonperishable food items, cleaning supplies, paper goods, and personal care items. We pack these items in boxes and deliver them directly to the pantry. Then too, some people prefer to donate money, which is also readily accepted, and given to the pantry for their purchases of food and supplies. Now, I realize that throughout the year, there are several food drives held in our community, and usually all of the contributions are collected for the benefit of the food pantry. However, the Miles for Meals food drive is different in several ways. Difference one, because of the access to the Lakeside track, Doug and other members of the community walk at a brisk pace around the track. There is a double benefit here. The walking is good for your fitness and well-being, and the donating to a worthwhile cause also makes you feel good. Doug goes around and around and around the track, around and around that track all day. Well, pretty soon, there are children and other adults following Doug. It's kind of like a Pied Piper approach. So there is also an entertainment factor from watching this parade. Doug, tell them how many miles you cover.
Twenty-six.
Pardon me, 26.2 marathon length, 104 laps, right? 104 laps marathon distance in the day. Surprising. Difference two is that Miles for Meals has a unique history. Years ago, Doug first organized this type of food drive when he and Mary lived in Deerfield, Illinois. When they moved permanently to Lake Mills, Doug felt strongly that this concept would flourish in our community. By the way, there are currently 35 to 40 families who visit the pantry twice a week. These families consist of 75 adults and 43 children. Now, this statistic is surprising, at least to me, but nationally, it is reported that 50% of the schoolchildren need government-subsidized lunch programs. Difference three, Century Foods in Lake Mills is our main sponsor and contributor. Brian Conrad provides $200 in gift certificates as an incentive to walk. These certificates can be redeemed at Century or donated to the food pantry. You can earn a $5 certificate for walking two laps, or two $5 certificates for walking four laps, which is equal to one mile. Two certificates are the maximum for individual, couple, or family. Lastly, difference number four, this is our third year for organizing Miles. In 2013, we were at Lakeside High School and collected 1,100 pounds of food and $2,200 in checks and cash. In 2014, we were at Commons Park in downtown Lake Mills and received only 515 pounds of food and 576 in checks and cash. So we are returning. In 2015, we're going back to Lakeside because of their track and excellent location. This is a win-win for you and the pantry. Bring a can of food or more to the high school, and then walk a few laps. Thanks for your attention.
Thanks, Tom. September 12th, right?
Wow. Nine to five.
Nine to five. Thank you. Any other committee input?
I didn't have anybody else sign up with me, so.
Okay, consent agenda. Minutes of July 8th, special meeting of July 13th, regular and executive session meeting, and July 27th, special meeting.
I move approval of the minutes of the July 8th, 2015 special meeting, the July 13th, 2015 regular and executive session meeting, and the July 27th, 2015 special meeting.
Second?
I'm moving to second to approve all the minutes of the meetings we had. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same side?
Let the record show that I need to abstain, because I was not a participant in one of the meetings.
Okay, three, four, and one abstention. Vouchers and invoices for July and treasuries for June and July.
I move to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $893,319.93 for the month of July 2015, and the treasurer's report for June and July of 2015.
Second?
Moving to second to approve the vouchers and invoices in the treasury report. Roll call, please.
I'm Delaney.
Aye.
I'm Imperial.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Administrative reports, Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening. I wanted to remind everybody that we have online registration open at this time, and it's open through Thursday, August 14th, at 3:00. We also have picture day. The last one is Thursday, August 13th, from 1:00 to 7:00 o'clock at Lake Mills Elementary School. I wanted to thank all of the participants of the focus group for communication. I know some of the board members were a part of that, community members, and our staff members, so thank you for your input. Mr. Voss will be taking all of the results of the audit and presenting us with feedback to help us with a strategic plan for communication. Back-to-school night for our elementary school is Wednesday, August 26th, from 4:30 to 6:00, and this is a time for our students to drop off their school supplies and meet their new teacher. The other day, as I was driving in the car, I heard on the radio them ask, "What is it that teachers do in the summer months?" Well, I can tell you what our teachers have been up to. The month of August is very busy. Last week, we had seven of our teachers and staff members participate in responsive classroom in Madison. This week, we have four elementary teachers and five middle school teachers in New York participating in Teachers College Reading Summer Institute. We have our 4K teachers attending an early childhood conference. We have four teachers in August 18th and 19th attending a PBIS conference. We have teachers, 13 staff members, that will be attending everyday math trainings to enhance our math instruction for our students. And then, we have 25 staff members that will be attending a Words Their Way training on August 21st. So they are very busy preparing for the students that will be entering back to school in September. Any questions?
I have a question. The communications committee you're talking about, is that a district-wide committee?
It's not a committee, it was a-
Or?
Sure, they were focus groups. So we, participants were invited to meet with Mr. Voss to be able to provide input about our current, the current state of communication and some wishes for the future.
District-wide?
Yes, district-wide. Yep.
Are you going to be sending out a report of the finding, when these are phoned?
He will, when he's done.
Okay. Will they be meeting again? I mean, is it a standing committee, or just?
No, it's not a standing committee. It was part of your strategic plan as to, how can we do it better? And this was one of the ways, was to have him come in from SISU to-
Have a committee?
And to talk with people as to how the district, where we are, and what we can do to do it better.
Okay, so we'll all be getting, all the board will be getting information?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholson.
I'm going to start out tonight by talking a little bit about what's going on at the middle school. Megan came back today, that certainly means, or one of our secretaries came back today, so that certainly means the year is gearing up. We have higher, well, I have in the board packet tonight for your approval, 567 ELA position. If that's approved, then we still have the .5 Science and Social Studies position to fill. Otherwise, we are sitting pretty good for hiring at the middle school. And just a reminder for parents, that we have that parent open house, August 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00. If parents go around and complete all of the items on their passport, they can pick up their child's Lenovo that night. District-wide, we have our new teacher day, August 20th. As mentor coordinator, we are working on getting that set up for them. Just to let you know where we are with ESEA, we're finishing up the end-of-year reports and doing our plan for next year, that's due at the end of this month. And as epic, we have, all of our reports went through to the state. They were all submitted, they were all done in a timely fashion. The state gave us a little more time than they thought. And then, today, I rolled over all of the teacher evaluations for the beginning of this year. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Strike.
And at the high school, as you can see, lots of construction going on, and they're finishing up, and I'm sure Mr. Sanders will talk more about that, but I just wanted to mention that the parking lot, the beautiful new parking lot, is not going to be for student parking during the day, so I need to keep getting that message out to students, that that is going to be auditorium parking, staff parking, and I still need for the kids to park in the parking lot at the front of the school. With our new food service, an important announcement that we need to share with families is that there's not going to be any more cash transactions. We're not going to have a concession window, as kids have known it in the past, and so we're going to need for families to put money in the students' account so that they can enjoy all of the à la carte options that are going to be available to them. We're very, very excited about our new food service. Our first day, September 1st, is just a reminder that only freshmen come in the morning, from 8:00 to noon, and that are for linker activities, and then all students begin at noon. Work has begun on the fall musical, Once Upon a Mattress. Lots of excitement around school about that. They're building sets as we speak, and it's very exciting. Our staff members, too, are geared up, attending lots of curriculum meetings, working on lots of planning for the upcoming year. And I know you're going to ask this, so I was being forethoughtful. Football has started, and we have 48 players and two managers. Volleyball, cross-country, boys soccer start on the 17th, and dance begins on the 31st. Equestrian team has unofficially started there, as you know, riding all the time. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Silver.
Good evening. So I'm going to start my report tonight with some changes in assessment that DPI has announced. And I don't know how many people know this, but the Act 55 has changed, and the budget bill has changed assessment for the district. We will no longer be taking the ninth grade ASPIRE in the fall, and we will no longer be taking the WKCE for Science and Social Studies in the fall. Those two tests have gone away. Last year, we took the Badger Assessment for the first time and the last time. Legislature had, has barred the state from taking that test again. So at this point, the state has put up an RFP for test vendors for this year, so we do not know what the test will be this year, but we do know it will be in the spring. And it will still cover grades 3 through 8, English Language Arts and Math, and then Social Studies and Science grades 4, 8, and 10. We believe the ACT will still be given for the 11th graders, and the ASPIRE for 9th and 10th graders in the spring. Does that make sense? So lots of changes for assessment. This will be the last year that PALS is authorized by the state, so they started that test probably about four years ago as a reading screener for kindergartners, first and second graders, and they will no longer be funding that after this year, but they want us to still use it this year. So lots of changes for assessment and accountability. Again, and the state has also said there will be no school or district report cards this year issued by the state because of the changes in testing, but they said they will be issuing them for the following year, even though we don't know what the assessment is yet. So some interesting information coming from the state. In your board packet, you have my seclusion and restraint report that is required yearly, that you can see the number of instances of seclusion and the number of instances of restraint by regular ed and special ed. We're really proud of the fact that we've worked hard with staff this year and professional development, and we have reduced the number significantly from last year, from the prior year, to make sure that our students are only being restrained when absolutely necessary for their safety. My next thing is another thing that is required by Act 55, and that is that they are now requiring a declaration of educational standards every year, and that we have to declare as a board, at the first board meeting after July 1st, but they made the law after July 1st, they made it July 15th, they posted it, that what our educational standards are that we follow for this curricular, for this year, for this school year. And so on the website, I have posted all of the curriculum standards. There is now, if you look at the website, it says, under District, it will say, Learning and Student Services, and under there, there is a section called Curriculum. And under Curriculum, I have now posted the curriculum that we wrote this last year for scope and sequence for English Language Arts, Music, and World Languages is all posted there, and then there's another bullet that says Content Standards. And there are links there for each of the content standards that we have. So under most of them, we follow the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards, but for English Language Arts, Literacy, and Math, we follow the Common Core State Standards for all of our curriculum writing. There's also a definition of content standards that I placed there that I'd like to read, because I think there's a lot of confusion between curriculum and content standards. And content standards are very specifically, articulate an essential core of knowledge and skills that students should master. Standards clarify what students are expected to know and be able to do at various points in their K-12 academic career. These standards are intended to focus teaching and learning, guide curriculum development, and provide a basis for accountability systems. The curriculum is how we teach, what we do to get students to meet those standards. So it's a little bit different. That's all I have. Any questions?
If some of these tests are going to be no longer done, are they used for anything in the classroom and for student assessment, other than just giving the information back to the state?
PALS we do use at the elementary level, and that one's only given kindergarten 4K? 4K, kindergarten first and second.
So is there something that's going to replace that?
Yeah, you know, right now, we also use Ames Web. They're both screeners. We'll have to make a decision, what do we want to do going forward, but it gives us information about how quickly students are reading and at what grade level students are reading. So it gives us some pretty valuable, PALS gives us valuable feedback right away, which is kind of nice.
Thanks.
So we'll make sure that, they're going to require us to have something in place. They haven't said, I think we get to choose whatever we want in the following year, and then they're supposed to give us some money towards the purchase of something.
Did this board adopt the Common Core standards?
To my knowledge, yes.
I think so, too. I don't know when it was, but, so that's what drives our curriculum.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chady.
The summer's always a busy month in the business office. Many people find that hard to believe, but there's a lot of stuff going on. Trying to wrap up our 2014-15 fiscal year and budget, continuing work on that, and the end is near. Avians is on board. They are here in District today. We have a new, or they have a new director of our program, Kathy Coiman. Some of you may recognize or know Kathy. She was formerly with Lakeside Lutheran High School a number of years ago as their food service director, and then spent time at the University of Wisconsin and also at Edgewood College. So she is returning to Lake Mills. She's a resident of the District. So they are on board and really kind of gearing up starting today. We're also looking into utilizing Aesop or acquiring Aesop as an automated subcaller. So we're looking, we were over in Cambridge last week to see how they utilize Skyward and Aesop to facilitate the calling of substitutes that occur. And then, one of my colleagues, I think it was Ms. Thompson, that talked about registration. We had our first registration night last week. I think we had 570-plus families or so come through, so pictures. So about a third, or just over a third of our students have obtained their picture. Many more have registered online, just simply haven't received the picture yet, but I'd like to give some accolades to Roseanne Punzel for orchestrating the online registration component in particular, so she certainly do lots of credit there. And then, just trying to stay on top of all the staffing changes with staff departing, resigning, and going elsewhere, and the new hires that are coming on board. With all that comes a lot of HR and payroll maneuvers that need to be taken place to get them set up, get their insurances in place, or terminated, depending upon if they're coming or going. So, a busy month.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders?
Well, I would, just first want to thank Patty for getting out the board packet. She did an awful nice job of putting things together from a phone call from Madison from me, so, again, gee, I want to thank her for doing that. Secondly, the high school remodeling project, just to kind of update you where you are, if you, as you came in, you see that the parking lot behind you has been paved, striped, and the landscaping, flowers, bushes, materials will go in tomorrow. The painting of the outside of the building has begun. The north side, or the west side, has been painted. The other two will be painted sometime this week, depending on humidity and dust type of thing. Inside, the bathrooms downstairs are, other than some paint, pretty much finished. If you get an opportunity, please stop and take a look at those. And the HBAC will be done by the end of next week. All of the ceilings will be in, all of the unit vents, all the windows are done. And again, I think they look really pretty nice from the outside, and again, I got to believe the energy savings that you're going to see in those is going to add up over time. So that's kind of where we are. Next week, the roof on the far end of the building will be, not replaced, but redone. And that's the tech ed wing and the hallway coming from the main building out to the tech ed wing should be done. Other than that, the landscaping and some work has been finished up at the elementary school, and there are some trees that need to yet be planted, but across the road where the parking lot was is done, and is being reseeded again, and the fences have been moved. And again, all of that work will be done before we start school.
Did they do the reseeding on that new area yet, Dean?
That's what I just said, yes.
Yeah, they did. I drove by there, I think yesterday, it looked like it was burnt to a crisp.
That's because there's nothing, and, I mean, it's just seed right now, so.
And we haven't had rain?
Not until today, we had a little. We've been watering as much as we can. The problem is that you can't, we can't move our irrigation-watering system to the old parking lot, because you can't put a hose across the road. The fire hydrant's on the other side of the road. So the city statutes say you cannot do that. So we have to help nature, or we're going to have to ask the fire department to help us out by bringing in a truck.
You could have a hard time seeding if you don't get help.
Right, right. So that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Action items, approval of professional staff resignations.
We have a couple this month. Number one, please accept my letter of intent to resign as my position as occupational therapist for the school district. As you know, it was my intention to return to my position after last year's sabbatical. I apologize for the change of plans. Please know that the last 20 years at the school district have been wonderful. I have enjoyed the experience of working alongside some of the most caring and talented teachers, in addition to the honor of working with some of the most delightful children and parents. While the decision to leave this position has been a difficult one, it also is the only one that allows me freedom to visit my children and grandchildren, none of which live in the Lake Mills area. Thanks again for the opportunity to work with the children of Lake Mills, respectfully yours, Lynn Larson. And again, that's an occupational therapist. Second one I have is please accept my official resignation from the Lake Mills Elementary School. I have accepted a teaching position much closer to my home at Cumberland Elementary School in Whitefish Bay. I have enjoyed my career in this district for the past five years as a new teacher, and have grown exponentially, both as an educator and an individual. It has been a wonderful working alongside teacher, staff, and parents of Lake Mills, and forming some great lifelong friendships. I will carry with me the lessons I have learned here as I progress further in my teaching career. I wish you and the Lake Mills School District continued growth and success in the future. Sincerely, Nicole Miller. The other one I have is by, I am writing to inform the school that I am leaving my second-grade teaching position. As you know, this summer, I had the opportunity to travel to the United Kingdom for six weeks, a nanny for a family I've known for quite some time. They have offered me a job to become their full-time nanny, an opportunity to travel the world with them, spending summers abroad. While I love teaching, my second-grade team, and my coworkers, my gut tells me this is an opportunity of a lifetime that I cannot pass up, and I may regret not taking the chance. I have enjoyed my time teaching at Lake Mills Elementary School. It has been rewarding and memorable. I will always treasure the relationships I have formed and my time spent as a kindergarten and second-grade teacher. With great dismay, I must give my resignation letter, and with much respect, I have appreciated the opportunity that has been given to me, Ms. Emily Oats. And then lastly is, please accept my resignation from my 2015-16 contract as a full-time Spanish teacher and ELL support teacher for the Lake Mills School District. And again, we will talk about work with the elementary program later in this. My husband has accepted a position with UW-Madison, allows me the flexibility to follow my passion of ELL programming. She goes on to speak, "I had the opportunity to work 25% of my contract last year with the ELL students from kindergarten through high school, and found that truly enjoyable, not only with the students, but also using my Spanish ability to help the students and families better navigate the school system. The ELL program with two part-time staff and bilingual aides was able to provide interventions at the elementary school level, maintain bilingual contact with families, administer access tests, and touch base with ELL students in middle and high school. Thank you for your consideration. I truly appreciate the support the Lake Mills area school district has given me as an individual to pursue my passion." Ms. Tara Williams.
I'll take a motion.
I move the board approve the resignations of Ms. Lynn Larson, occupational therapist, Ms. Nicole Miller, kindergarten teacher, Ms. Emily Oats, second-grade teacher, and Ms. Tara Williams, high school Spanish teacher, and thank them for all that they have done for the students, parents, community, and school district of Lake Mills.
Second. Moving to second, any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
I'm Imperial.
Aye.
I'm Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignation.
And it ended up that we only had one. We thought there was more coming. The one is, this letter's inform you of my resignation as 7th-grade volleyball coach. I have enjoyed serving the school and sports programs in Lake Mills at various levels, and hopefully will return in the near future if circumstances and opportunity will allow me to do so. Please accept my thanks to the school and the program. Sincerely, Craig Legal.
I move the board approve the co-curricular resignation of Mr. Craig Legal, 7th-grade volleyball coach, and thank him for his time and effort for the athletes, parents, community, and the school district of Lake Mills.
Second.
Moving to second to approve co-curricular resignation. Questions? Roll call, please.
I'm Delaney.
Aye.
I'm Delaney.
Aye. I'm Imperial.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of para-educator resignation.
I am sending this to inform you that I will be staying in Los Angeles and will need to resign my position as special ed aide. It was a great pleasure to work with Lake Mills High School and have had the opportunity and experience there. Sincerely, Cindy Hoppy.
I'll move the board approve the resignation of Ms. Cindy Hoppy, high school special education para-educator. Thank her for her time and effort to the students and school district of Lake Mills.
Second.
Moving to second to approve para-educator resignation. Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
I'm Delaney.
Aye.
I'm Imperial.
Aye.
I'm Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contracts.
Contracts for you tonight from, again, we're on the new second page. Serena Haberman, Haberman, the 2nd grade teacher. Erin Kip, who will take the 5th through 7th grade English Language Arts. Carly Miller, 4th grade teacher. Kevin O'Brien, high school technology education teacher. Casey Sisson, the high school Spanish teacher. And then a 25.25 FTE ELL teacher contract to Tara Williams.
Motion, please.
I move the approval of the following professional staff contracts. Serena Haberman, 2nd grade. Erin Kip, 5 through 7th grade English Language Arts teacher. Carla, Carly Miller, 4th grade teacher. Kevin O'Brien, high school technology education teacher. Casey Sisson, high school Spanish teacher. Kendra Shelton, Occupy-
No, no, that one's not. That's why we're looking at the new sheet.
Okay, you took that one off?
Okay, you took that one off?
Yep.
Tara Williams, ELL teacher.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the professional staff contracts. Comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Bobbington Imperial.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment.
In your, in your package, you'll find letters of write-up for Mr. Justin Anan as the head boys' baseball coach. Ms. Kaylee Cutrell is the seventh grade volleyball coach. Mr. Sam Fossil, head boys' soccer coach. Ms. Megan Larrabee, freshman volleyball coach. Ms. Josie Morris, co-head cross-country coach. Mr. Todd Patton, head golf coach. Mr. Dylan Strasberg is an assistant football coach and Tori Zastro is the eighth grade volleyball coach.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve co-curricular letters of assignment for the 2015-16 school year for Mr. Justin Anan, head boys' baseball coach. Ms. Kaylee Cutrell, seventh grade volleyball coach. Mr. Sam Fossil, head boys' soccer coach. Ms. Megan Larrabee, freshman volleyball coach. Ms. Josie Morris, co-head cross-country coach. Mr. Todd Patton, head golf coach. Mr. Dylan Strasberg, assistant football coach and Tori Zastro, eighth grade volleyball
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Bobbington Imperial.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of cooperative services contract with Watertown for the deaf and hard of hearing.
We have one student that we need to have help with, more help than we can provide with the deaf and hard of hearing services. We in the past have done some of this work through CISA, but we were able to do a 66.031 agreement with Watertown, who's got a teacher who I know is very, very, very good, who's got time to be able to work with our one student. So this really works out favorably for our district to be able to do this agreement.
I move the board approve a 66.0301 cooperative service contract with the Watertown Unified School District for deaf and hard of hearing services for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the, the contract with the Watertown School District for the deaf and hard, hard of hearing. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye. Bobbington Imperial. Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously.
The only thing on that is we will need some signatures at the end of the meeting, so.
All right. Approval of previous year's budget adjustment? We ready to go on that?
Yeah, presented at the board table this evening is a pink sheet that follows the DPI's framework for the budget adjustments that are necessary. These are in reflection of the 2014-15 budget. We needed to move some dollar figures from various items, primarily taking money from business administration to other areas that it went over the budgeted amount. So the form there captures those as far as the necessary movements of dollars from business administration to elsewhere within the budget.
I move the board approve the 2014-15 budget revisions as presented and that they be published.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the budget adjustments. Roll call, please.
Bobbington Imperial.
Aye.
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 Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of salary increases for 15-16 school year.
I would move that this agenda item be tabled at this time and further move, if I can do a combination motion, that the board establish a comprehensive employee compensation committee to be headed by Ms. Pam Strike to look at salaries, benefits, et cetera, for the 2016-17 school year and beyond.
Second.
Your second? Moved and seconded to table salary increases for the present?
Aye.
Questions?
Yeah, I thought this committee was going to be headed by the WSB consultant that we hire.
Well, you have to have somebody heading up your side of the committee and then you're hiring a consultant.
Okay, will they be here all the time then?
Well, I would imagine.
I hope so.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, roll call.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Bobbington Imperial.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes three to one. Approval of gifts.
We have two gifts this month. One is an Engelhardt cello and case from Ms. Susan Hart, which is valued at about $480, which was given to our orchestra program, and $300 from the Lake Mills Moravian Church to help fund field trips for students who are not able to do that at the elementary
Motion, please.
Move the board approve the following gifts. Engelhardt solo and case from Ms. Susan Hart valued at $480 for the orchestra program and $300 from the Lake Mills Moravian Church Outreach Committee to help fund field trips for students of the Lake Mills Area School District and thank them for their generous donations.
Second.
Second, Ms. Dr. Delaney? Questions or comments on that? Can we thank them for their gifts? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Bobbington Imperial. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. September board items?
I have, well, the salaries will probably come back. Second, please remember that the new teacher day, you are invited to the luncheon. That is on August 20th. And that will be at the middle school in the cafeteria, catered by our new food service. And the opening end service, which is on August 24th. Breakfast begins at 7:45 to 8:30. And then we'll move to the gym for the teachers to get bored listening to me for the rest of the morning.
When is that?
The 24th of August is the opening end service, which I hope you can kick off.
Okay.
At 8:30. I don't have, I don't have salaries for September. I don't have anything right now. It should be finished with the construction. The school should be open and, you know, all of the beginning of the school year things to be brought to you at that point.
Any other items? All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call and favors, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're adjourned.